We imported an audience. Will I show it as 7 o'clock? And with that, I will call to order the March 9, 2021 McMinnville City Council to order and call on Claudia to do a roll call. Claudia?
Counselor Garvin.
Here.
Counselor Geary.
Here.
Counselor Meeky.
Kelly?
I'm here.
Okay.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Present and accounted for.
Counselor Peralta. Council President Drapkin.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you, Claudia. That takes us to the Pledge of Allegiance. And could I call on Chris to have you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight? We've got the flag up early. So, Chris?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're muted. Okay, we're back. Thank you, Chris, for leading us through the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. That brings us to Proclamations and Awards this evening. And I'll start out with a proclamation that recognizes Women's History Month. And so I'll go ahead and move forward with that. Whereas Women's History Month is a celebration of women's contributions to history, culture, society, and has been observed annually in the month of March in the United States since 1987. And whereas Women's History Month is a dedicated month to reflect on the often overlooked contributions of women to United States history. And whereas McMinnville women of every race, class, ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our city in countless ways. And whereas McMinnville women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life of the city by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas McMinnville women have played a unique role throughout the history of the city by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the city of McMinnville. And whereas McMinnville women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our city. And whereas McMinnville women of every race, class, and ethnic background serve as early leaders in the forefront of every major social change movement. And whereas McMinnville women have courageously served our country in the national and state armed forces. And whereas McMinnville women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other peaceful movements which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in McMinnville, Oregon, and our national histories have been overlooked and undervalued. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim March is designated as Women's History Month in the City of McMinnville and do recommend its observance with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. I also invite all of us to visit www.womenhistorymonth.gov and www.womenshistory.org to learn more about the generations of women who have left enduring imprints on our history. In witness thereof, I have herefor sent my hand and caused the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed on this, the 9th day of March 2021. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville. And so we recognize Women's History Month and those that are on the line that fall into that category, thank you for all that you do. And we look forward to learning more and observing your considerable efforts and things that you have done in our city, in our state, and nationally. So, thank you. With that, we have a Fire Department Awards. And so Chief, I'll turn over to you to recognize, I know we've got some certificates that both you and I signed, so Chief, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. This evening, we're here just to recognize some of our public safety partners. A couple of them are not able to be here tonight, but I'll make sure I mention them by name as we move forward. And in the Fire Department, we have a tradition. We try and have an annual awards banquet. Obviously, we're COVID-free, so in the meantime, we're trying to acknowledge this large incidence where we've made a significant difference in the community and our organization sooner rather than later and try and invite council to participate particularly while we have the Zoom opportunity. So, on November 30, McMinnville Fire Department responded to the report of a commercial structure fire at Baker Street Apartments. Law enforcement arrived first on scene and started to evacuate the lower levels of the apartment building. Chief Riggs received word that law enforcement had heard someone still heard someone still in the building upstairs while they were evacuating the first floor. Chief Riggs directed Medic One to operate in a rescue mode and evacuate the fire floor. That crew proceeded down the hallway clearing rooms in the opposite direction of the fire. They located a victim in the room with the door shut near the stairwell stairwell located in the middle of the building. They recognized that the victim could not be able to evacuate down the stairs due to the heavy smoke. They sheltered in place with the victim while they developed a plan to evacuate the victim. While Medic One was searching, Medic Ten deployed an attack line off the truck and proceeded to the second floor and searched the apartments near the seat of the fire. They also were tasked with initial fire attack once their search was completed. Medic Ten attacked the fire in the apartment that the fire originated in only to verify that the fire had spread into the attic. While Medic Ten was attacking the fire, Medic One had called out for a ladder to rescue the victim. Truck One and police officers helped to place the ladder while Medic One crew lowered the victim down the ladder. The efforts of these members of our public safety team during this trying fire demonstrate their commitment to excellence and service to our community. It is with great pleasure that we recognize their accomplishments. I have Chief Hanafin and McDermott here to help me hand out the certificates as well as the medals for our members. The Fire Department Meritorious Service Award is given to individuals who perform a noble act of distinction in their performance of duty. Two individuals not able to be here, three individuals not able to be here this evening to receive this award, Officer Gump and Officer Serta from the Police Department who initiated initial evacuations on the facility, saving the lives of those on the first floor, and firefighter Chris Frank, who was part of the Medic Ten crew. But if I can ask firefighter Bruce Samms, Assistant Chief Larry Giddings, Lieutenant Daniel Cummins, and firefighter Tommy Dawson, please come forward. These members of our organization are recipients of the Fire Department Meritorious Service Award.
While these are being passed out, how I wish we could be there together to congratulate your fine work and your heroic actions to be of assistance to those in need. So, we're not able to be there, but our hearts are surely there. So, Chief?
We recognize Fire Department Outstanding Service Award for highly credible accomplishments, bringing acclaim to the Fire Department as a result of devotion to duty and service to the public. In that way, award Battalion Chief Philip Riggs.
Again, congratulations.
And then for the final awards, the Fire Department's Life Saving Award are given to the members who is principally involved in the saving a life of another person whose actions were directly responsible for the life-saving act. Firefighter Gary Steindorf and firefighter Mike Florence.
Again, likewise, from the City Council, we surely appreciate your fine work and especially when it's related to saving a life of an individual. That couldn't be finer work and it, I know, makes you feel happy inside and fulfilled, but it also rolls out to the City Council and the city. Any parting words, Chief?
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Appreciate your time.
Thank you all. These are the, I mean, these are tough situations, but the action of our emergency personnel, emergency safety personnel, we thank you for your always being ready and on the spot to help us out. Well, that takes us this evening to our comments from citizens. And so is there anyone that would like to speak on a topic other than a matter that is in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter or matters scheduled for public hearing at some future date? We will give each individual an opportunity to speak for three minutes, for a total of 30 minutes. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom function to request to speak. Or if you're in our Civic Hall, let Claudia know. And please state your name and your address for the record. And then we will open the mic so that you will be able to speak to the council. I want to recognize that in our packets this evening, we received and it has entered into the record, an email that we received from Andrea Kennedy Smith and about a concern she had as it relates to parking violations from her perspective. And she's been in contact with Amy on that, so I'll make sure that that is in the record. And so we'll go to Claudia. Anyone that has let you know that they'd like to speak this evening, Claudia?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Then we will then move over to advice and information items this evening. And so we will have reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. And I will just kind of go across the top. And so, Chris, I have you up first this evening. Chris?
I'm super quick. There were no meetings to report on this last two weeks as both of them are coming up, I think, in the next two days.
Yep, you're going to be busy. Let's move over to Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. MAC PAC had a meeting last week. The pool subcommittee recommendation, pool subcommittee made their recommendation and it was ratified by MAC PAC, the larger MAC PAC, and adopted as presented by the subcommittee. The same for the library. The library subcommittee made their presentation and was adopted by the MAC PAC larger. The next meeting is April 1, 2021. Does anyone want to know the specifics of what those recommendations are? I could read them real quick. Okay, I saw one head nod. That's good enough for me to keep talking. As they are written, so I don't examine too much. So, the library recommendation that was made and adopted was to, and I quote, "Build a new freestanding library on the site of the existing aquatics center once the new recreation and aquatic center project is completed. This would assume a one-level library layout with an optimal configuration and adaptable layout. This could be the most cost-effective and responsible investment of public resources. In this scenario, the two existing library buildings would be renovated to serve other public needs and program uses." And that's the library. And I'll read the pool. And in full disclosure, I have another document up that I'm reading from, so I can't see anyone if they're waving at me, but...
Fine, you're fine, Zach.
Okay, good. So, the other pool, so the pool recommendation was sort of split up into competitive, competitive pool, recreation pool, and then we actually have a recommendation for outdoor pool. So, the competitive side was a 50-meter by 25-yard multipurpose lap competitive pool with at least one bulkhead, which is a movable portion of the pool to bifurcate it for different events or type of events or competitions. An adequate deck space and seating for no less than 500 spectators. And while there are many definitions of Olympic-sized swimming pool, this is classified as the American Standard of an Olympic-sized swimming pool. So, that is the size of the recommendation for the competitive side. The nuance of the recommendation continues to say that one of the two pools indoors will have a deep-water portion, a deep-water tank in order to accommodate diving boards for both recreation as well as, not competitive diving, I guess, so just to facilitate diving and deep activities, which comes into play with certain certifications that we are or are not able to allow or handle. Some certifications need a deep enough portion of the pool, as do some recommendedies like slides, climbing walls that you can climb up on the edge of the pool, jump off and land and have fun, and then rope swings. Third portion is a warm-water recreation family pool with amenities that could include a lazy river, vortex, zero-deflect net tree, slide or slides, lap lanes as part of that, and a hot tub inside of it with interactive water feature. The two pools that added to it is the two pools, so the competitive side and the recreation side indoors will be separated by a dividing wall. So, if there's a big raging competition going on, you could still go to the pool in your own recreation room area and feel like you're not alienated by the competition side and likewise, the other way around. And then that we included in the recommendation is an outdoor amenity of a recreation pool, so an outdoor recreation pool, which could or could not be included, accessed by roll-up doors in the summer. That could include pool, lap lanes outside, slide, beach, lawn space, and/or splash pad. So, that is the aquatic recommendation that was adopted by MAC PAC. Any questions on MAC PAC recommendations before I move on to my other committees? No, no?
I don't see any.
Okay. Landscape review, we have no, had no meeting. And I don't think we have, it sounds like any meet to the agenda to come up. Climate-friendly and equitable communities rules advisory committee has not met since the last meeting. The Active Transportation Concept Plan hasn't met, but we're in the waning days of the digital open house in which we're looking for community feedback on the proposed plans. And they had their open house, or they're having their sort of stop-by and open house digitally, but they had their actual live stream, interactive one. So, that one's chugging along. And that concludes my update.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go over to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the first meeting of the DEI Advisory Committee will be this Thursday evening at 4:30 PM. It's open to the public and invite everyone here to attend. We have a pretty robust, although introductory, agenda. Part of the preparation for that is for that committee to review the presentation that we received from the Fair Housing Council. And also, the McMinnville Affordable Housing Committee will be reviewing the presentation from the Fair Housing Council in the interim. And let's see, I don't believe we had a housing meeting since the last one. And I, Zach?
Thanks. I totally forgot that the Fair Housing Council has their big billboards up. How long does that run for in our Civic Hall?
I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, well, if, no. So, if you want to go walk by the windows, go do it.
I've done that. I walked my mom down there.
I think the contract goes till March 16, if I recall it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thanks.
Remy, back to you.
Thank you. I think, I think that's it. I was looking. I was trying to see if we had one meeting in between. I apologize for not remembering. I was trying to pull up my last agenda from Affordable Housing. I can't remember if it was the day after, the day before, and if I reported. So, actually, if you don't mind coming back to me, I'll get that agenda pulled up for the date. Thank you.
Kelly?
It was the day after, Remy. I'll let you...
Do you want to do it then, Kelly?
Right ahead. Well, I guess I could try and pull it up in a hurry.
I'll have the agenda here in no time.
I'll let you do that. I really don't have anything to report this time, so...
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go on to Adam.
Yeah, we had an airport commission meeting. We updated the rest of our rules with exception to some self-fueling. We were hoping to do tomorrow night and finalize that up, but I got a late email today that Mike's going to work on getting some city fire code language into their relation to self-fueling, but not putting at risk of losing FAA grants. So, we'll probably wrap that up towards the end of the month. And at our next council meeting, I believe, you guys will see some stuff in that package related to updating some hanger leases to reflect some stuff we brought onboard with the potcake hanger lease a couple of years back. So, there's some equity out there among all the airport users of having a renewable lease with their hangers, which will make them want to upkeep them. We had a budget overview as well. That all went pretty straightforward. And then we're slated to have a YCOM meeting on Thursday at 3 o'clock. So, I can send you the link to that, Mayor, if you'd like to attend.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Remy, do you have the agenda from Affordable Housing?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the time, everyone. So, we did review for a final time the changes proposed or the work that's being done on single-room occupancy allowances in our code. That'll now be moving to the Planning Commission, where the Planning Commission will then vet the work that was done by the McMinnville Affordable Housing at the Time Task Force and take it through that process. We've also been watching a couple of house bills as they have been moving through. House Bill 2006 and 2004-3, so we received updates on those at that time. And did some reviews on our action plan. And then, as always, at the beginning of those meetings, we get reports from YCAP, the Housing Authority of Yamhill County, and from Champion Team. So, the way that this committee typically works, just for, so everyone is aware, the way that this committee typically works is that as we take on projects coming out of our action plan, that action plan is broken into short-term, midterm, and long-term actions. And as we take on new projects, we discharge subcommittees to work on them. A couple of years ago, we had broken off a separate subcommittee that was supposed to look just at issues facing our unhoused population. But that committee, it's not a, that's not a small subgroup committee topic that then can come back with just a few recommendations and then move it through some process towards some end goal. So, we actually pulled that subcommittee back up and made it a part of our main committee. And so every single housing task force meeting that we have, we get reports from our partners and we discuss upcoming issues as they relate to homelessness. So, that was a part of our committee at the time. And I finally found my notes from it. We learned that YCAP has emergency rental assistance still available. And then on the flip side of that, the Housing Authority has some landlord compensation funds available. And so those are funds that are specific for landlords that may have not been able to collect rent during COVID. And landlords can apply for back rent, and that's through the Housing Authority of Yamhill County. All the way through last May, we learned that Champion Team is currently solvent through, they were solvent through the end of February. And they may be transitioning their structure and may be transitioning to a new body as a whole in compass. And that's being led by Howie Harkema, who is, I think you all know, is a longtime housing advocate. And we reported, Kelly especially, reported at the last meeting, this last meeting, on House Bill 2006 and 2004-3. So, I won't redo those. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Let me just do a few reportings of my activity. I received a memo from the governor today and indicating that a number of counties will be moving as of March 12, and then it's for a two-week period to March 25, to new risk factors. And Yamhill County is going to be moving from high to moderate. And I just wanted to summarize for those on the call. A moderate risk allows a maximum of eight people into your home with no more than two families, a maximum of 10 outdoors in your home as it relates to eating and drinking. Indoor dining is allowed at a capacity of 50%, no more than 100. No more than six people at a table would be the maximum. I'll go down to recreation and fitness establishments at a 50% capacity, no more than 100 people. And indoor full-contact sports are prohibited. And then it talks about retail and some of the other things. So, you can always go to the Oregon Health Agency's website to get more information. But I think that is very welcomed. It's going to help our downtown and our eating establishments come back to a more reasonable level. Last Wednesday, on March 3, we had a MURAC meeting. We talked a little bit about the urban renewal district expansion. We have a sliver of property that is at the very north part of our Alpine area that we talked about expanding and bringing them into the urban growth boundary, primarily up at the old Mission Warehouse Facility. And we know that that facility, as it's been remodeled and repurposed, that property is for sale right now. And so we decided to wait till we had new owners to move forward with determining whether we'd make a recommendation to the council or to the urban... make a recommendation to the council or to the Urban Renewal Agency to expand that. Jeff Knapp came in from Visit McMinnville to talk to us about the railroad corridor improvements down by, off of Third Street, and an opportunity that we may have of being able to enhance the visibility of that property there and have maybe a walkway. So more to come from that perspective. Chuck Darnell talked to us a little more about our city-centered housing strategy and some of the pros and cons, and some of the roadblocks and successes that we can see from that. Again, all stemming from that housing strategy, work that we've done with the UGB and, and others. We reviewed our property assistance program. Heather went in detail as to the monies since the inception of, of the Urban Renewal District, the monies that we've given out in grant form, in loan form, and monies we've given out in grants for facade and design, those types of things. And we were very pleased with the traction and some of the things that we've really been able to accomplish from that perspective. And then, if you remember, I think it was at our last council meeting, Walt Gao and Heather Kane representing MIRAC, talking about the Third Street Improvement Project. And we had a great discussion that we came back and had kind of an update with MIRAC on that, understanding that, you know, we could possibly move some monies, but we're not going to have enough funds to do what we really want to do in the downtown area unless we find other monies through grants or bond or whatever. So we updated from that perspective. So a good discussion as it related to MIRAC. I can let you know, and I think each of you received a copy of the letter, Council President Grabkin and myself penned a letter to, it would be a house on House Bill 2001, and representing YCAP and some of the dollars that might be utilized for some of the good programs that they're involved in. And so, again, we have been involved in that. MWAP, which is the Mid Willamette Valley Act, is canceled for the month of March, and that would have been Thursday. Thursday, although that is canceled, Thursday, Commissioner Kula, myself, and a representative from the tribe are going to be able to testify before the OTC, the Oregon Transportation Committee, about the Newburg Dundee bypass and the opportunities that it looks like infrastructure dollars are going to be made available, and how critical it is for us to get to a point to be shovel-ready in that arena. We only have three minutes each, so that's going to be a very short window of being able to talk. But again, good things from that perspective. And then the last thing that I'd like just to bring up to council, it has been brought to my attention, and it's a feeling that I have personally, is last year, we had a campaign financing ordinance that was placed here in McMinnville. And for those that went through the election, that is a very, very cumbersome process that needs to go. We're very much aware that the state legislature is looking at putting out a state approach when it comes to campaign financing that might be more appropriate. And so I just, I just throw this out. We could, there's two things that we could take a look at. If you say you like it the way it is, then we won't do anything. We could repeal it, or we could ask staff to come back and share, primarily Jennifer and Amanda come back and share some of the, the pieces that were very hard to navigate, because it is a very complicated ordinance. And so I may stop just for a moment and get a sense of what the councillors would like to see us do. So nothing, repeal it, or come back with more information so that we can have a discussion around that. Chris, I'll, I'll just go across. Chris?
Well, I'm in favor of repealing it. I feel like it's, it's, it's not a McMinnville solution. And, and the complexities that it created for, and we're volunteer people here. I think the biggest person who raised funds here was the mayor, who barely would have qualified under some of this. And where it did qualify just created a hassle. And I think there's unintended consequences. And, and those aren't considered often in these kinds of situations. But one of the reasons people choose to fund through PACs is, was witnessed in this last election cycle. We saw two different restaurants that, in a matter of minutes, had between 20 and 50 negative posts on their Google pages and on their Yelp pages about their product, simply because it was made public that they backed a candidate. And, and that's, that's a legitimate concern, and I think it's probably on all political spectrums for all candidates. And as a result, you're going to have people that would otherwise be interested in giving, that, and wanting, and, and supporting a candidate because they represent what they believe, that will choose not to. And, and I don't think we want to be in the business of silencing people. And that, I think that's just a dangerous way to go. And so that's one of several reasons that I think this particular ordinance, well, two of actually reasons, I think this ordinance needs to go. I'm for repeal.
Okay, so you're for repeal. I'll go over to Zach. What are your thoughts?
I think it overall should stand, but I'd be willing to listen to staff's recommendations on how to improve the process. But I, I think it should stand.
Okay. Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would like to hear a report back from staff.
Thank you. Kelly?
I would tend to agree. I, I'm with Chris. I do understand how you feel. Believe me, it was miserable. But the main reason we did this was for ballot measures that could come in and just kind of wipe us out because of the overfunding. And it would be nice for people to really realize what was going on. So yeah, I, I would like to hear staff's proposal.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's go over to Adam.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of repealing it, but at a minimum, at least getting report back from staff. I definitely think we spent too much of city resources being the sign police than what we could have been spending city resources on in the election cycle.
Thank you, Adam. And so the sense I get is, let's, if we could, Jeff, just have staff come back. And I know, Jennifer, you put so much time and effort into this, and Amanda, you were involved in this. So if we could bring this back to the council, just in a, a presentation to us so that we could determine the pros and the cons, and maybe even get a report if we have some insights into what's happening at the state legislature, that might be appropriate.
We could probably schedule a work session to delve into this topic here and bring it back to you in future days.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may request a specific piece of info, just the time horizon for this date rules.
Right, yeah. Well, I, if I understand, it's in the current session, but we're very early in that session, and we don't know that that would even move forward. Okay, let's now move to department head reports. And so Heather? You're not coming through, Heather, for some reason. You're not muted, but we're not hearing anything. Why don't you see if you can work on that, and we'll come back around if you have anything. Amanda, I will have you go after Jeff. And so Jennifer?
Good evening, everyone. See, I just want to let you know, I've got my feed in two separate fiscal years. Just sent off what I hope is the last feedback on our FY20 audit. And hopefully, fingers crossed, knock wood, that we will be issuing that the week of March 22nd. So that'll be great to put a bow on that. And then secondarily, we are heading into budget season for FY22 and looking at where we are this year. And I'm not going to speak much about that. I think Jeff's going to talk about kind of the picture of what we're seeing in this process. But I did also want to mention, I've had the great fortune the last couple of days being in a remote session of the Oregon GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, their biannual meeting. And there were so many great sessions, and many of them were really, really on point for some of the issues that we're looking at here locally in terms of big capital projects, how to fund them, what, what options are out there, green bonds. I mean, just some really cool things to think about. Also, in terms of just larger city financing opportunities, and how different approaches, different municipalities have taken with matching funding streams to service delivery. And there's just, there are a lot of options out there that McMinnville, I think, has probably discussed a little bit in the past, but that we haven't done deep dives on, that I really look forward to taking a look at more with staff and you all and the public as well. So anyhow, it's been a really eventful week in the finance departments.
Thank you for that report, Jennifer. Let's go over to Mike.
Nothing this evening, Mayor. I'll have a couple of resolutions and I'll get in a bit.
Thank you. Kylie, we, we've heard a bit from you earlier this evening. Any other things that you need to share with us?
No, and now I'm having a camera issue here. But just to echo what Council President Grabkin mentioned about the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, and it'll be Thursday at 4:30. We hope to see many people there. It will be a, you know, introductory meeting, so the content won't be as exciting as I anticipated to be in the coming months. But it is open to the public, and we welcome anybody who wants to join.
Thank you, Kylie. I know I'm excited to attend and, and listen in on the, on that first meeting and the discussion. Let's go down to Susan.
Hi, everyone. Lots to report in Parks and Rec. Spring soccer registration is open. The pool is open. The community center is open. We're working hard to plan for an awesome summer. Unfortunately, the senior center is still required to stay closed under the state guidelines, but we're working on all of that as well. So we're super happy to see our patrons back in our facilities.
Thank you. That, that is good. That is so good. I'll run back up to Heather and see if, if her mic's working now.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I'm a little nervous because I have a lot, I've done that too much.
I know you do.
So I just wanted to follow up on Councillor Derry's discussion regarding our active transportation planning for 99. It's, it's something that's, that's quietly being undertaken right now, and it could have a big impact on the community. We want to get the community involved. But ODOT came to us and wanted to do a pilot project in McMinnville to look at how to encourage more bicycle and pedestrian activity and, and what we call rolling as well, which could be wheelchair scooters or skateboards. In our sort of north-south corridor, which would be 99, or in an adjacent corridor to get people from the north side to the south side of the community. There's safety issues on 99, so the question is, do we look at the safety issues and improve those, or do we find an adjacent corridor where we make improvements there for that type of activity? So right now, online, people can go and participate. There's a couple of different scenarios that have been suggested by the consultants and the project advisory committee. With the online open house is, is open until March 11th, so it's been up for two weeks now. And you just Google "walk bike 99W McMinnville", and you'll be able to get to the survey, go through it, and provide your input. Based on that, that, that could make some changes to 99W or an adjacent street to, to really encourage bicycle and pedestrian connectivity north and south. So we encourage people to participate.
Zach has a question for Heather.
Heather, if I may, one, probably the most frequently asked question I've had about that is, why is the city of McMinnville only looking at, picked the wrong voice, why is the city of McMinnville only looking at Highway 99 corridor alone here? My answer has been, well, it's an ODOT-funded study to target how top 10 dangerous that stretch of road is and alleviate that specific concern. And that any other bicycle or alternate modes of transportation, or transportation in general, would be handled by an update to that rest of the systems plan led by the city. But this is a ODOT-funded effort that we are, we were shoulder-capped to participate in, and it's a great opportunity to improve the safety of that corridor. And the rest of the city's transportation infrastructure will be looked at by a different study. Is that correct?
That is true. It is a pilot project. So for ODOT, they always used to just use, used to just look at their facilities for bicycle and pedestrian medics on their facilities. And then recently, they went through a process and realized that maybe putting bikes and pets next to highways wasn't the best solution. And so they have adopted a plan that allows you to look alternative corridors adjacent to the facilities that create that. So we are looking at some, you know, some facilities on local streets, but just in terms of providing that north-south connectivity. We do have plans in our work plan right now to update the transportation system plan, which would be starting next year if it's funded through the budget. And the transportation system plan has both bicycle and pedestrian master plans in it. And we do intend to look at those type, those two facilities much more intensively with that transportation system plan update, which would create system infrastructure throughout the whole city.
Cool. And, and, and we, and we're very lucky to be able to be a part of this, this project with ODOT. A third of their focus is on safety and multi-modal transportation. And as I said, on the Mid Willamette Act, we talked a lot about that. So they're putting money towards that. And to be able to be one of the few cities that are being looked at doing this type of thing, I think is, is a real win for us.
Yeah, and I guess I would also add, interestingly, we were able to also talk about crossings on 99W. So there are suggestions for improvements for safe crossings of 99. So I encourage people to look at that as well, because those, those could be critical and make a big difference in terms of how we get across 99W.
And the other nugget that they alluded to that will just be an improvement to that corridor's safety, no matter what, is their resurfacing is not too far out. So that'll take the sine wave elevation of that street and really psh, plop it down, which will help for that crossing that you encourage.
And that's, that's happening right now, Zach. Matter of fact, Matt Water and Light's working on enhancing their water system as they're, they're doing that resurfacing.
Yeah, that'll be a huge, huge benefit.
Okay. I think, so I'm going to go to the city civic center. And so our two chiefs, Matt and Rich, would you like, you have anything to report this evening?
Mayor, this is Chief Gill. Mayor, this is Chief Gill. I have nothing to report. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing from the fire department, sir.
Thank you, too. So let's go to City Manager Jeff Towery. I know that he wants to do some updates and also include a little bit, as they've, as staff's been working on the budget, to give us some heads up from that perspective. And then after Jeff, we'll go to Amanda, because we have a legal thing that we need to take care of.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me run through a few talking points for the council and the community about where we are in our budget preparation. I'm going to focus tonight specifically on the general fund, and the council knows this. Just to remind you, general fund's about a little more than 25% of our total budget, but does include most of the outward-facing services that folks recognize as city services. The total general fund budget's roughly $32 million. We spend about $2.7 million a month. And the council's reserve goal is for two months, or $5.4 million of operating reserve. The council adopted a policy in November to set that reserve goal, and also sets a three-to-five-year planning window for us to rebuild the reserve to that level. Personal, personnel costs make up about 70% of our general fund. The police and fire departments each make up about 30% total of the general fund. Our initial gap to balance the budget and start fiscal '21-'22 with about a one-month reserve was $3.5 million. We see the gap as both significant and short-term, as we work towards the possibility. We see the gap as both significant and short-term, as we work towards the possibility of a fire district, which would create some capacity to support remaining city services. We're going to do our best to make any reductions that really limit the long-term impacts. While it's significant, we still see it as a short-term issue. Our round-one budget proposals included revenues and expenses that were incrementally higher than the current year, roughly 3% higher on the revenue side, about 6.4% higher on the expense side, which is the typical historic gap between annual revenues and annual expenses. In some cases, our presumed growth was based on historically appropriate amounts. Most information was based on end-of-calender year-to-date experience. We included initially about $1.3 million in capital requests, which is about twice the amount that we have recently budgeted in the general fund. No borrowing options were included on the revenue side to support those capital expenses. The mid-year budget review that we provided to the council in December was really a point-in-time assessment. It fairly presented a good result that we had to meet the city's current-year targets for revenue expense. It also did not forecast any improvement in the reserve status of the general fund that that policy again was adopted in November. The actions that we've taken to date, revenues and expenses have been updated based on actuals through February. We're basing forecasts on experience, and we are not currently presuming any additional COVID or disaster relief funds that have not been received or committed. We're deciding to hold certain vacancies open. All vacancies will be reviewed for budget and service impact prior to making a decision to fill them. Departments are reviewing expense requests based on historic use of funds rather than budget authority. We're reviewing the possibility of short-term borrowing for capital, and a potential reduction of capital requests are under evaluation. Essential expenses for the balance of the fiscal year are under consideration. Initiatives to reduce personnel costs are under consideration. We'll be reviewing those with employees for feedback prior to implementation, and we will consider both budget and service-level impacts when reviewing those options. Some revenue initiatives will be evaluated and presented to the council for consideration prior to final budget deliberations. We'll be looking for community input and engagement as part of any revenue strategy. Just as an example, we're planning to do some polling on the fire district concept and may poll some other revenue options as part of that community opinion gathering. The next steps include our second-round budget meetings with departments to begin next week. Departments are coming up with prioritized options for additional cost-side reductions based on their core services work, and there's a possible third round of budget meetings before the end of March. Our current gap, we have initial work that's been coming out of round one, has reduced the gap by about $1.1 million, leaving a balance of about $2.4 million, at the same level of operating reserves as the FY '21 budget. Again, this does not include any capital financing or any personnel updates. Just to note that long-term projects, such as the work of MAC PAC, facilities, plans, updates, et cetera, really need to continue in order to balance our commitments to long-term projects and near-term continuity of service delivery. Just a reminder that this work takes months to do. There are ebbs and flows in the process. There's good news and bad that we have to incorporate and respond to, and new information to consider. For example, while I was, while I had written this, it hadn't been corrected for typos by Matt and Susan, we got an email from Senator Merkley's office indicating that we may receive up to $7 million of COVID relief in the, in the COVID relief package that's currently under consideration in Washington, DC. So a lot of changes. We'll keep the council, employees, and community updated as we move through the process. We'll be sharing this, link to this video clip with the budget committee members as well. Thank you for your time tonight.
And so I'll see if council has any questions, Jeff, on that budget update. Seeing none? Thank you, Jeff, for that update. That was timely, and thanks for your preparation in being able to, well, your preparation to deliver it tonight, but the hard work that's been going on for the last couple of weeks as everyone's been putting their shoulder to the wheel, so to speak. And that gives us our last item in advice and information. Tonight, we have a settlement agreement that we talked about in our executive session this evening. So we'll turn the time over to Amanda, and anything else that you'd like to report to us? Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor Hill and council. I'll start with my update for that matter, just so I can get that out of the way. I've got a busy week this week. I'm attending a virtual continuing legal education seminar regarding ADA compliance, specifically focusing on ADA-compliant Word and PDF documents that I'll be attending tomorrow. On Thursday, I am conducting training for both the Historical Landmarks Committee as well as the DEI Committee on just some basic public meetings, public records, and ethics law considerations. And then Friday, I will be attending an all-day continuing legal education seminar hosted by the Oregon State Bar's Government Law Subcommittee, and it's called the New and Newer Considerations for Local Government. A couple of highlights that I wanted to let you know about is, there will be a discussion about the legal obligations after the Boise decision that I think is relevant for all local governments. And there is also a code enforcement seminar that we're going to be having. So a busy week with a lot going on. Excited to get some new information, though. So with that, I'll move to the other item of my report. So I will refer the council to my staff report that was distributed to the council earlier today, and will be made part of tonight's packet. This, the staff report focuses on the proposed settlement of the lawsuit QM versus City of McMinnville and the State of Oregon. And I am, the staff is requesting that council adopt a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a settlement agreement of that litigation on behalf of the City of McMinnville.
Thank you, Amanda. And as I mentioned, we had an opportunity to have discussions pertinent to this settlement agreement, and we had, we had a representative from CIS and our insurance company, a part of that giving us the legal description on that. So I just, I will open it up. Any discussion from council? Hearing none? Then what I would ask is, I would ask for a motion authorizing the city manager to execute the release and settlement agreement on behalf of the City of McMinnville. So a motion, please? Aloud. And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Chris and seconded by Kelly. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no? This, this motion passes unanimously, five to zero. So Amanda, we can move forward on that.
Thank you, Mayor Hill.
Okay. This is going to take us to, this evening, we're going to have a public hearing, a public hearing regarding the Planning Fee Schedules Resolution 2021-12, a resolution adopting a planning fee schedule and repealing all previous resolutions adopting planning fee schedules at the time this fee schedule becomes effective. And then we will also have a public hearing together on the Planning Fee Schedule Resolution 2021-13, a resolution primarily approving a building fee schedule and repealing all previous resolutions adopting building fee schedules on the effective date of this schedule. So with that being said, we will open our public hearing, and we will call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present the planning and building fee public hearing topics. Go ahead, Heather.
Yes, so thank you, Mayor and city councilors. Since this is talking about fees and numbers, I will give a presentation so you have that in front of you and for the general public. Also want to let you know, Star Graham's in our, Building Official is on the meeting as well, so.
Welcome, Stuart.
You'll bear with me as I navigate with my new system. Okay, so we are looking at, this is a public hearing for the two resolutions. It's a planning fee schedule update and a building fee schedule update. It is not a public hearing for the SDC fee schedule update that's in front of you tonight as well. That's already been, as a policy, memorialized in the McMinnville Municipal Code, and it's brought to you as a courtesy in terms of being transparent with the public, but all of that was adopted previously by the city council as to how to move forward with those updates. And Community Development Director Mike Visitt will talk to you more about that. So Resolution Number 2021-12 is the Planning Fee Schedule Update. The resolution appeals all the previous resolutions adopting a planning fee schedule. The fee schedule is scheduled to take effect on July 1, 2021. So we're coming to you in March very deliberately. We want to make sure that our development community is aware of these fee schedule updates and has time to plan for them, either by submitting their projects before they take effect, or building the fee update into their project. So this is about three months in advance, three, a little more, three months, almost three and a half months. And we want to make sure that they, that they have that time to put it into their, into what they're doing. This, the planning fee schedule was last updated on January 1, 2019. So we did not update it last year because of COVID, and we're waiting, and we're pushing it to July 1 of this year because of COVID as well. The planning fee schedule, the update is a proposed 13% increase, except for sign permits and appeals. The sign permits are not increasing, and that's based on the fact that we feel that that's the land use application that most impacts our existing business community, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to support them and not increase fees for them. And then appeals was a value system that the city council put together during the last update to ensure that the general public had the ability to participate financially in appeals, and so that only has the 3% increase associated with it. The 13% increase is due to a 10% full cost recovery catch-up that was first directed in 2018 with the passing of a resolution then, and plus CPI. And the CPI that we use for the planning fees is directed in the resolution as well. Over the past 18 months, the CPI has increased by 3%, so it's the 10% plus the 3%. Current planning fees pay for review of development projects for compliance with state and local codes, so they're very, very specific in terms of what the program does and who it serves. It serves individuals and project developers. So it's typically considered a specialty user program that is supported with a fee program, and that's something that the general taxpayer generally underwrites or subsidizes. Some communities do choose to subsidize development general fund dollars based on a variety of different reasons, to keep development costs down or some other reasons thereby. Most communities do go into a full cost recovery program for them, though, because the end beneficiary is the developer in regard to the program itself. And then some communities choose to subsidize certain elements of the program with general fund dollars, and in this case, in McMinnville, it's the appeals and sign permits. Our current cost recovery for the planning program is approximately 55%. This is based on the fee analysis that was conducted in 2018, where we worked with a consultant to identify what the full cost of providing the program was for each individual permit application that we provide, and then where we were at in terms of collection of fees. And at that time, we came to the city council, and we were directed to get the 55% cost recovery with a fee schedule update, and so that was passed in 2018 and took effect on January 1, 2019. Since then, we've separated the planning fund into four separate funds, so we can really track the current planning program. In planning, we have both current planning and long-range planning. Long-range planning is generally seen as a general fund-funded activity because it does impact the whole community and isn't a specialty user program. And then we, and current planning is the development review. And then we also have administration and code compliance. So we're trying, we've separated all of our funds in the budget so that we can track this more specifically in terms of revenue and expenses out the door. And we're hovering around 55%, depending on what's happening in the market right now in terms of land use applications. We are seeing a trend towards less land use applications because of land constraints. And we're also seeing a trend towards more complicated land use applications because the land left is very awkward parcels that's difficult to develop. So even though people might be coming in with what would normally be a fairly quick review for land use applications taking longer just due to the complexities associated with that project. But in 2018, you adopted that 55% cost recovery, and you directed us to do a 10% catch-up for the next five years plus the CPI. We like to compare it with other cities, because we want to see how we're trending in comparison to other cities. We pick up six cities around us. Five of them we pick up because they are the city's closest in population to McMinnville, so that's Albany, Redmond, Grants Pass, Oregon City, and West Lynn. And then we always pick up New Berge well, because that's our local neighbor community where development's occurring. And so looking at that, we just pick a random selection of land use applications and permit types, and look at the fees associated with that. This is our proposed fees against their existing published fees. And we're sort of trending, you know, somewhere in the middle on most of those, and further down, some of them are a little bit higher. The ones that, the one that's the high one for this particular selection is Ring Zone. May I look at that a little bit more closely over the next year and understand why? But I do think it's because there is such land constraints in McMinnville that we're very protective of the property and how it's meeting our land needs analysis in terms of moving forward. And then some other things to point out is, not all fee schedules are the same in terms of how we identify the different type of permits. And so some will have, if a public hearing's associated with the permit, they'll have a separate public hearing fee. We embed all of that into one fee because we don't want to confuse the customer, but there are other communities that have that as separate fees. And then some communities, such as Newberg, doesn't have their indirect costs in their fee, their fees for their permits. That's added when someone comes in with the permit fee application. So for instance, all of our indirect costs are embedded in our overall fee schedule for the permit, so Plan Development, $5,150.50 includes our indirect costs. And that's the cost of the city supporting the planning program outside of the direct staff working on it, so that the administrative support through the city manager's office and other offices. In Newberg, they add a fee. They have a certain percentage that they add to each permit that fee that they collect that pays for all those other additional services in terms of the indirect cost allocations. I did not add all that up into this chart. I just didn't feel that that, that would take a lot of my time, but I'm happy to do that if anybody's interested. And I did confirm the Newberg numbers with the Community Development Director in Newberg. So Resolution Number 2021-13 is the Building Fee Schedule Update. That repeals all previous resolutions as well that adopted a building fee schedule. It takes effect also on July 1, 2021. Usually, we update our building fee schedule in January, so January 1 of every year. This year, we delayed it to July 1, again, because of COVID. And the last time it was updated was on January 1, 2020. We do update this every year fairly systematically, and we update it based on the CPI. This will come back to you as city council if you move forward with the action tonight for final approval on May 25, 2021, because the other thing that happens with the building fee schedules, we need to send it to the State Building Codes Division. They then post it, and people have the opportunity to appeal it to the state for 45 days. And then after that 45-day schedule is over, it comes back to city council for final approval, and we're taking it back on July 1. So there's a built-in additional process for that. The update proposes a 3% increase. The building program is all labor. It's, so it's the cost of inflation to deliver the program. Building permit fees pay for plan review and inspections of new development and construction projects for compliance with state and local codes. So all development-construction projects have to be built to our state building codes for the same across the state. We do have to provide a program in McMinnville, either locally where we provide it, or the state will provide it, or a third-party vendor may or may not provide it, depending on different rules that are occurring right now at the state level. But it's, it's something that if you're going to build in McMinnville, there needs to be a building program reviewing it for plan review and inspections. A lot of people talk about, why don't you just eliminate them? We can't do that. There is actual legal needs to have it. Same is true for planning. Building fees are based on a six- to 12-month reserve. So we're trying, we want to keep a six- to 12-month reserve for this so that we continue to have a building program. Our building program runs very lean and mean, and if we get to a point where we are losing people... And if we get to a point where we are losing people, we're losing entire sections of the program where we can't provide that service anymore. So we want to make sure we can provide the service to the development community. That's why the reserve is so important. We're trending right now at about nine to 10 months of reserve and so we're watching that as well. It's typically also considered a specialty user program with a full cost recovery fee in most communities. So this is a comparison with other cities for our building fees. Again, just a random selection of permits that we pulled. And you'll see, again, we're trending somewhere in the middle of our six comparables there. If you look at it, everything, there's nuances in every portion of the fee schedule, so it's hard to say, you know, our residential permit valuation is more expensive or less expensive than this city. So therefore, our final building permit is more or less expensive because if you'll notice, building permit plan review is a percentage of the building permit fee. And that differentiates across the cities between 65%, 85%, and 100%. There's also hourly rates in there as well that differentiate across the cities, et cetera, et cetera. What we're fairly low in is plumbing for a new home for two baths, one kitchen typically, compared to our other communities. And that's because we can provide residential plumbing inspection services with our current employee base. But where it's interesting, Stuart and I are looking at this, is you'll see the appliances there are higher in terms of the unit number than our other communities. And that's because some of those are commercial appliances and we do not have our commercial plumbing inspectors, so we have to contract for that service and it's significantly higher than if we had our own person on staff. But we don't have enough need for that in terms of the amount of permits coming through McMinville to support that process. And this, you know, for builders, typically what we hear is it's the overall cost of the development fees that's the most important. So when the builder comes in and gives us a building permit and they get an invoice, it includes their building permit fees and their SDCs. They're going to be looking at SDC fee schedule update later on in the agenda. I did a comparison for the other cities with our SDC fees as well. And you can see McMinville trends significantly less than the other communities. We are one of the lowest cities in the state of Oregon for SDC fees. There's a variety of reasons for that. We don't charge a water SDC fee and our other SCCs are, some of them are lower than the trends across the state. What this chart does not include is that several communities have our SCC fees for stormwater as well as other SCC administration fees. So this is the full SDC schedule for McMinville. It's not the full SDC schedule for all the cities across. However, it shows the trends of the overall development fees. So a lot of questions always about, you know, your fees contribute to expensive affordable housing. If you raise the fees, it makes affordable housing more expensive. We do have, and we've had this since 2016 memorialized, we did it in practice prior to that, we have a provision where we discount planning and building permit fees by 50% for qualifying affordable housing projects. So that's any home that's being built for a household of 80% area median income or less. And they need to certify that it will serve that household income level for 10 years. And this is memorialized in both the resolutions in front of you today in terms of the planning and building permit fees. And then it's also adopted as a policy in the municipal code for the SDC fees. We exempt transportation and wastewater SDCs from affordable housing projects as well. So typically, the certificate of exemption for this, the amount of money that's saved by affordable housing projects based on these reductions is about $6,6500 per year. And we use that with community home builders and Habitat for Humanity. We'll be using it on the Housing Authority project as well. It shows significant local contribution. And there have been some private market developers who have used it as well. So in terms of public engagement, we did notice this in the newspaper on both March 2 and March 5 for the public hearing tonight. We sent the press release out to the News Register and the Chamber in advance because we wanted to get the information out as much as we could. There was an article that ran in the News Register, so we appreciate that. We sent out an email to our local developer group. And then we did a presentation to the Chamber Government Affairs Committee. Next steps is for you to conduct the public hearing, consider the resolutions, if you adopt them, the fee schedules become effective July 1, 2021, and we'll advertise it with the development community. Are there any questions?
So we'll open it up for any questions of Heather. Go ahead, Kelly.
Is there a discussion? I noticed there was something about financing SDC fees. Has that come about or how are we dealing with those in the past? They've had to be paid, correct?
Yeah, so right now, they are paid for at the time of issuing the permit or when we collect the payment on the permit. We do not, I believe, and this is a better question for Mike when he presents on the resolution for the SDC increase, but I do not believe that we have an adopted policy for financing SDCs at this time.
Are we considering it? Is there a way to do it that McMinville doesn't lose out?
There are ways to do it. There are many communities that do finance SCCs independently. It would be something for us to put together. I would suggest if it's something the City Council wants to explore and it is on our housing strategy, which we haven't adopted yet, to explore that, that staff would bring back recommendations to City Council as to what that would look like. And we're also going through public facility updates because of the UGB amendment over the next couple of years. So we will be looking at our SDC methodology for our public infrastructure and that's a great time to have that discussion as well.
Again, other questions? Again, we'll have an opportunity to ask questions as we present the resolution a little later tonight, too. Seeing no other...
My hand's up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Chris.
Couple of questions. One is procedural, just because I'm new and I'm not clear. What's the difference in procedure between an ordinance and a resolution?
Amanda, can I take that? Yeah, I was going to say I can jump in on that. So resolutions are generally more temporary in nature where ordinances are considered more permanent policies. Usually, they're tied to our code or to like a land use action. So fees generally are considered by resolution because they're updated much more frequently than our ordinances are.
Do we treat the procedure the same, motions, second, approval kind of thing?
Correct. The only difference, which actually doesn't apply here, is that typically with resolutions, you don't have to wait the standard 30 days for the effective date. But here, we're putting the effective date as July 1, 2021. So that nuance doesn't exist in this circumstance.
Okay. But also, Amanda, we don't have a first and second reading, so it's a typical Robert's Rules motion and action for a resolution.
With ordinances having the council polled so that we'll know individually and it's recorded that way.
Okay. And then secondarily, it's my understanding on the planning side of this, this was already passed as a, with a 55% increase and then five-year, 10% increase. And so it's already been passed by the council that this was going to happen. Why are we revisiting this if this was already decided?
Well, so a couple of things there. So we didn't pass a 55% increase in 2018. We passed an increase that got us to a 55% cost recovery. And so for some of the fees, it was more in 55% and some were less. With that said, the council gave us direction to do 10% increases as a catch-up as part of that, but it was not an adopted policy. And so we're using that as sort of our basis of bringing back recommended proposals to you, but you have the opportunity to, you know, adopt the fee schedule update annually through the resolution process.
Okay. So then Mayor, thank you for giving me the chance to ask these questions and thank you, Heather and Amanda, for answering them. Is the discussion point later when we deal with resolution? Then I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Any other specific questions? Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, and I can ask this later, too, if it's better at that point, but I had a couple of things on the planning fee schedule update of actual the itemized fees. Should I ask that question now or later?
Why don't we ask it later when we're going over each of the resolutions individually? Because what we'll do now is go into a public hearing and hear from the public and then we can take that discussion and move it to a resolution discussion also, if that would be okay.
Yeah, that's totally fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to remind everyone that we're going to be moving into a public hearing. So I'm going to open up Resolution 2021-12, Planning Fee, and Resolution 2021-13, Buildable Fee Public Hearings for Comments. And so I will open the public hearing and ask if there's any comments from those in the audience that would like to address us in the public hearing for the resolutions I'll make one more call for anyone that would like to give testimony in this public hearing on Resolution 2021-12 and 2021-13.
Mayor Hill, it looks like no one has signed up at Civic Hall or via Zoom.
Thank you, Claudia, for that. And so what I will do is, we have no comments, so I will close Resolution 2021-12, Planning Fees, and Resolution 2021-13, Building Fee Hearing at this time. Now, we're going to go to our resolutions this evening and we're going to go to the resolution on the SDCs initially. So we're going to consider Resolution 2021-10, a resolution establishing revised system development charges, known as SDCs, pertaining to park and recreation, sanitary sewer, transportation, and repealing Resolution Number 2020-14. So I will call on our Community Development Director, Mike Biset, to present. Mike, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to my staff report that is in your packet as well as copies of the system development charge ordinance, previous SDC rate, Resolution 2020-14, and then a summary docket or document showing the proposed changes for 2021. Per Chapter 3 of the Municipal Code, SDCs can be adjusted annually to reflect the increase in construction costs. We use the Engineering News Record Construction Index for Seattle. That index for January 2021 was posted and the index grew by 6% for calendar year 2020. So the documents you see before you this evening reflect a 6% increase in the transportation, sanitary sewer, and parks SDCs. In response to a couple of questions regarding financing of SDCs, our municipal code does allow for the deferral of SDCs. Most recently, we've had a few projects where we've allowed the SDC payment to be deferred till occupancy of a project. We've worked with those developers to put an agreement in place that they wouldn't receive occupancy until the system development charges were paid. The code does allow for the city manager entered into an individual agreement with a developer or a builder to make system development charges over a period of time. And that particular provision has not been used in my time with the city. And if a developer or builder were to propose that, we would work with the city attorney's office and the city manager's office to develop an agreement that would allow for payment of the system development charges over time. So those provisions already exist, I think, both in state law and in municipal code. Rarely used, but the provisions are available if needed. And as Heather mentioned, we do currently defer, actually excuse, system development charges for transportation and wastewater for affordable housing. So those charges are waived. And with that, I would ask if you had any questions and if not, recommend that you adopt the resolution as presented this evening.
Thank you, Mike. And so I will open it up to counselors that would have any questions with Mike on the SDCs. Again, this is a discussion that we have on an annual basis, so go ahead, Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, Mike, thank you. I think as Heather referenced in the reviewing the methodology behind assessing SDCs now on what and when, when is the opportunity for the discussion on no, park SDCs on commercial projects and whether or not that trend can or should continue or if we want to look at ways to generate new revenues for parks and development by assessing the SDCs on commercial projects, which, correct me if I'm wrong, but we currently do not.
Sure. And certainly would allow Park Director Susan Muir and City Attorney Amanda to weigh in if I get this wrong, but the foundation of a system development charge methodology is for a community to identify those projects that are necessary to accommodate growth over time. And so the charge is really intended to reflect the cost of development and its impact on infrastructure. And so in the case of a Parks SDC, the methodology that was put in place several decades ago now was based on an assessment to residential development. And the decision at that time was made that the residence, the residential portion of McMinville was the part of our population that was predominantly using park facilities. And so the assessment was made to residential properties. Since that time, many communities have adopted methodologies that include commercial and industrial use of park facilities in addition to residential use of park facilities. And so when the new Parks Master Plan is put in place, there'll be a list of capital projects that's identified to accommodate growth of the community over the planning period. And then the council will have a decision to make how they want to recoup the cost of that growth, whether, you know, what level of recovery for the system development charge, and also having an opportunity to determine how that cost is spread across the various users of park facilities, residential, commercial, industrial properties. So absent a revisit of the master plan and a new methodology, you couldn't now decide to access commercial industrial properties without having that work done first.
So what I'm hearing you say is as a part of the endeavor to update the Parks and Recreation Master and Open Spaces Master Plan is when we would have that?
Correct. And that's similar to what we did with the Transportation System Plan in 2010. We adopted that new plan and then we went forward with a financial analysis of how we were going to recover the capital, pay for the capital pieces that were in the plan and assessed a system development charge based on PMP TRIP generation. And then we determined that we were going to recover approximately half of the cost of development through system development charges.
Copy. And you'll stay around while we get that up and rolling and execute it, right? You're not going to leave before we get that new Parks and Open Space Plan.
I'm a property owner in McMinville and I will pay close attention to those...
Sounds good. Thanks.
Other questions of Mike from council? I like that little jab that Zach put in, Mike, on you. We're going to recognize you at our next meeting as your last meeting, full-time.
Feeling ill, I'm not sure I'll be able to make that one.
Remember, it's all done by Zoom, so we can track you down. Other questions? Okay, seeing that we have no other questions, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-10.
I move that we adopt the motion 2021-10.
Second. And then it's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Zach. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Resolution 2021-10 passes unanimously five to zero. That takes us to our second resolution this evening for consideration, Resolution 2021-11, a resolution amending the contract for personal services to Century West Engineering Incorporated for the apron and taxi lane rehabilitation project at the McMinnville Municipal Airport. And that was project, that is project number 2017-10. So again, I'll call on Community Development Director, Mike Bisit, to present. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And again, I'll refer you to my staff report that's in the packet and in this case, a number of attachments, including the proposed resolution and the proposed contract amendment with Century West Engineering. Century West, my project manager at Century West poked me not too long ago and said, hey, did that contract amendment ever get approved? And it caused me to realize that while we were waiting for grant approval from the Federal Aviation Administration, before we approved the construction contract, I was remiss in advancing the construction inspection piece of that project to you for approval. So you have an existing contract with Century West Engineering that took you through bidding of the project. So they did all the environmental work, the design and construction bidding. This proposal that's before you this evening will carry you through the end of construction. Since this is a Federal Aviation Administration-paid, grant-funded project, there are very specific federal requirements related to the construction of the project. Century West Engineering is our expert on those requirements. We don't have city staff on hand that are well-versed in federal contract administration. So they will provide those construction services for us. The contract amendment you see before you this evening was vetted in two ways. The Federal Aviation Administration asked that we do an independent fee estimate of this scope of services. So I actually had to reach out to a second engineering company to vet this fee estimate. That firm came back with a higher price, which allowed me to say this fee estimate was appropriate and advanced it to the Federal Aviation Administration for review and approval. They have reviewed and approved the scope of work and subsequently issued a construction and engineering services grant for the project. You'll recall that this project's 100% FAA funded, there's no city match, and this work will be done in August, September, and October of this calendar year. So unless there are any questions, I'd ask that you approve the resolution as proposed.
Any questions from council? Mike, I know that as you indicated, this will be a project that's taken over the summer month, probably three months. We don't anticipate any wildlife holdbacks like we did on the runway construction that took a much longer period, do we?
So that was certainly a much larger and much more complex project that was over a couple of construction seasons. We actually do have, we had to do full environmental assessment on this project to make sure that there wasn't an impact on the street torn lark. We actually have built into the construction contract and this engineering services scope, monitoring work during construction to make sure that there isn't an impact to the street torn lark. If we go to start construction and there's a group of larks nesting near this work, then we'll have to secure that area and work with agency folks to complete the construction. But simple answer is, there weren't any birds identified anywhere near this area of the airport, and it's not our expectation that they'll have migrated to this area since we've done the environmental work for the project. But it's a great question. Moving forward, anytime we turn, shovel the dirt on the airport, we'll have to deal with the environmental assessment and surveys related to the lark.
Thank you for that. I just know that that was a significant element in, when we repaved and redid the runway. Let's move over to Remy.
Thank you. This isn't hyper-specific to this particular project, Mike, but since this conversation has come up, I'm just, I was wondering if you wouldn't give a brief recap on the other species that are, the butterfly that's also at the airport, just to get everybody and especially our newest councillor, Chenoweth, informed of these different protections that are in place and that sometimes impact work at the airport.
Sure, and so on the airport proper, within the fence, we have the street torn lark and we have wetlands. Those are the two environmental issues that we have within the fence. On airport property across Highway 18 adjacent to Loop Road, we actually have a lupin plant that is habitat for the endangered butterfly. And so we have worked with local soil conservation folks to enhance the habitat of the lupin plant to encourage its continued growth. It's on a piece of airport-owned property that's not needed for farming or other airport uses. So we've, over time, worked to keep that habitat cleaned up so that if the butterfly folks want to come and do an assessment to see if we have butterflies pleasant, present, we've done some work to ensure that that habitat is maintained. But those are the ones that I'm aware of, Remy. Were you actually asking about anything else?
No, I think those were the two that I was thinking of. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mike? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-11. So moved?
Second.
And a second? So that was Chris, that was Chris and then Adam. All those, the, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution Number 2021-11 passes unanimously five to zero. Okay, this now takes us to Resolution 2021-12, a resolution adopting a planning fee schedule and repealing all previous resolutions, adopting planning fee schedules at this time, at the time this fee schedule becomes effective. And so this is our first resolution and I'll turn the, go back to our planning fees and it is a part of the public hearing that we just had. So I'll call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present. Heather?
Yes, I just had a couple of additional things I wanted to provide to you outside the public hearing. There are two amendments I'd like to suggest to the planning fee schedule. One is for the appeal from the Planning Commission decision. That should be, the proposed fee should be $1,033. That captures the 3% CPI. And then the land use compatibility statement for marijuana should be 1931.25, not 1941.25 to capture the 3%. You'll notice that there are some permits where we don't, where the full cost recovery and the original current fee were the same. Those are permits that we didn't have any trend line for, so they were new permits in our system. So working with the planning consultant for the fee study, we didn't have a historic trend line. So we did it based on what we thought the costs were and that's what we populated the schedule with, and those are only increasing by 3% as well.
Before we get into discussion, can I mention another potential need for an amendment? If you scroll down to the section where it talks about subdivisions, you have a subdivision fee for less than 10 lots and you have a subdivision fee for more than 10 lots. So if I were a developer, I'd be building 10 lot subdivisions.
Yes, except for, so in McMinnville, subdivisions less than 10 lots don't have a public hearing process. So that's another incentive for some developers. However, cost of development spread across the spectrum of putting these types of projects together, typically having more lots than less.
Let me be clear.
Better return.
If the lot happens to be 10 units, there is no charge listed on your sheet. It's less than and more than, but no equal to.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes. So it should, it should be more than or equal to 10 lots, and my apologies for not catching that.
So that will be an amendment also.
Thank you, councillor. And we've had this fee schedule in place for four, for three years and no one's caught that yet.
Boy, a new I can bring up our overlookings.
Like I was saying, if I was a developer, I'd be building 10 lot units right, or developments right now, because there's no schedule for that.
Okay, any other questions of Heather?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Go ahead, Adam.
Heather, on the marijuana one, when we took testimony back in the 2018 public hearing, there was concerns about the accuracy of the cost of recovery, given the heavy lift of just onboarding staff with all the new regulations and stuff. And you had mentioned at that point, you'd revisit that cost and it doesn't look like that's happened in the updated fee schedule. And then the second part of that is, there's a lot of other things that have annual renewal fees that are very minimal. And so I was curious, from your standpoint as staff and also from the council's standpoint, is if there could be an annual renewal fee for marijuana, given, A, it's not tax deductible for that industry under the 280 tax law, and B, it's one of the most expensive fees on here and they're subject to annual renewal, you know, regardless where most land use compatibility statements are a one-and-done thing, but with OLCC regulations, you have to get a land use compatibility statement every year to renew their license.
So councillor, we haven't seen, we don't see land use compatibility statements coming on an annual basis for marijuana businesses? I'll look that up really quickly in our database right now. I know they have to get an annual permit from the state, but they, I do not believe it requires another LUX review by the planning department to do so. And then we did, relative to the discussion that happened last time when this came through, we did start tracking our time for the LUX statements for the marijuana review. It is a more intensive review than the other LUX statements, and so it is taking considerably more time. I worked with, I forgot what the gentleman's name was, but he came in right after, I think he testified at that hearing, and he came in right after and we worked through his LUX statement with him and tracked our time as we went for that.
So you still feel that you're spending four times the amount of time on the marijuana LUX statement as any other LUX statement that comes through the city?
Yeah, so we, because the things that we have to do, there's spacing standards involved with the LUX statements for marijuana facilities based on our code, so we're drawing maps and things like that for them. We're also, for the production facilities, we are visiting with police and fire for some of the review for that as well. So there's, there's additional review processes for those LUX statements then. For instance, we get LUX statements for, is this property located at such and such a address in the right zone, in a commercial zone, industrial zone, or residential zone? So then we just look up the property for that and fill out the LUX form for it. I'd be happy to do more tracking. We haven't actually seen, trying to think of the last time we've seen a LUX statement, LUX statement come in for a marijuana facility. It's been a while since I've seen.
You had one about six months ago for a whole fillers license?
Yeah, and it was a, it was a similar address that another one was at too. I do remember that one. But that's, that's the last one I think that has come in. We were getting them more regularly before that. I'd be happy to continue to track that. And I'll look up, I'm going to look up right now if I can find it really quickly, whether we get annuals on them. I don't think we do, though.
Yeah, I guess the other side of that is that last one you had, I mean, they've had three LUX statements on that same property. So it just seems like, how do you have to go through the whole process again to do the LUX statement on the same exact property by the same owners?
Yeah, but I think, and I'll, I can visit with them. So another thing we do is we have an hourly rate on this chart under administrative fees. When we feel that something's coming in that it just seems, where we can tell right away it's a process that's not, that's an anomaly for the regular process, we will visit with the applicant and say, you know, we think you could save money if we just went into an hourly rate on this, because we're not going to be doing as much of work as we do for the standard permit that comes in for this. And so we do do that. And I don't know if we did it with that particular property owner or not, because I know they came in with several different ones on the same property. And I can go back and look at that and have Sarah get you that information.
Yeah, I mean, that's really the only feedback I'm getting from the fee schedule is from the multiple marijuana users.
Okay, and did that user tell you that he?
It's not just from the one on that property.
Okay. And he was charged the full amount for it?
It was still in review, so I don't think he had his bill yet. It had just been dropped off to you, but he felt like he was going to get charged the full amount again?
Okay, again, I'll have Sarah look at that and bring the trend line up and send it out to everyone and see what we do with that.
Any other questions, Adam?
No, I mean, I just, if we're going at 77 an hour, it's like a standard LUX statement, it's a five and a half hour review and a marijuana LUX statement, it's a 25-plus hour review. So it just gives me pause that it takes that long when the county can get through it in a couple hours.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-12 with three amendments, the appeal fee for the Planning Commission, the marijuana fee with the 1931 and 25 cents, and then subdivision to be 10, less than 10, and equal to 10. Do I have a motion?
Fair enough.
Does a no vote push us to, this doesn't do second reading, first reading stuff, right? No vote is just majority rolls kind of thing? Okay, thank you, yes.
Amanda?
Just to clarify, I think what Heather had said is that it's less than 10 and then more than or equal to 10.
Okay, okay.
Is that right, Heather?
So it'd be 10, more than or equal to 10?
Yes.
Okay. With those three, with those three amendments?
I support.
Okay, Kelly, and a second?
Second.
Remy? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, signify by saying nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. And so Resolution Number 2021-12 passes three to two, three in favor, two in opposed. Thank you for our work on that. Up for consideration now is Resolution 2021-13, a resolution primarily adopting, approving a building fee schedule and appealing, repealing all previous resolutions, adopting building fee schedules on the effective date of this fee schedule. So I'll go back and this is the second resolution that was dealing, dealt in our public hearing. And so I'll turn it over to Planning Director Heather Richards to present. Okay, Heather?
Yeah, so this is a standard 3% increase into the building fee schedule. If you recall, in 2018, when we switched over to the State ACELA program, which is a If you recall in 2018, when we, um, switched over to the State Acela program, which is a e permitting program offered by the state to, um, city building programs. Um, we learned our fee schedule was structured in the, in, um, an older way and needed to be updated. So it's a different look for the fee schedule, and there's some additional permits in there as well. But that, the, we went through the, um, fee study with the building fee schedule, found it was pretty much on core with where we needed to be. And so we've just been looking at, uh, CPI inflationary increases in it.
Okay, thank you, Heather. So I will ask for council discussion on, uh, the, uh, fee, uh, the fee schedules, building fee schedules. Seeing no comments, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-13.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's, uh, been moved by Remy and seconded by Kelly. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those in, opposed, signify by saying nay? Resolution 2021-13 passes unanimously, five to zero. That takes us to our ordinances this evening. And for consideration, the first reading with possible second reading of ordinance number 5101 and, uh, ordinance 5102. Uh, we're going to, this evening, uh, the next two items on the agenda, uh, will be, they're related to one, to one another in one development project, but are separate, uh, land use decisions. Uh, is, if I have no objections, we'd like to suggest that we receive the, um, staff report with the planning, uh, commission's recommendation and having the staff present both of them into one report this evening. Do I have any opposition to doing that? Hearing none, we'll call on Heather to present. Go ahead, Heather.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I'm going to share my screen for this presentation as well. Sorry, my system, it's showing up on different screens each time I do this. Um, so this is two ordinances in front of you, and it's for a, uh, it says my screen sharing is paused. Do you guys see my screen sharing?
Yes.
We'll see how that.
It, it's not maximized, but we're, we're seeing your screen, so it's not in slide mode.
Oh. All right. Well, Scott Burke, if you can help me after this with, with my system in my office, that'd be great. So if you can see the slides, that's, we'll just go through it. It's, uh, ordinance 5101 and 5102, and it's for two different land use decisions, but it's really just to add a second drive-through lane to the McDonald's that's on Norton Lane. Um, and the reason we have two, it's gonna be frustrating, two land use applications is we have a planned development overlay at the three mile lane area. And, um, and so that does not allow the second drive-through lane because of signage, um, criteria. So we need to go through a text amendment for the planned development overlay. That's a zoning text amendment, so that's docket Z, Z as in zebra, Z as in cat, 2-20.
Your slides have dropped out. Okay, they're coming back. There we go.
Scott's playing with my computer for all of you. I'm not moving anything.
Heather, I will move the slides for you, so you'll just tell me next.
All right, next. Okay, um, so then we have, um, the, then, then we need to actually do a three mile lane design review. That's one of our requirements in the three mile lane area. So that's what we call docket TML 2-20. Those are the two land use applications. They're bundled as one package. The applicant requested that. And so they're coming to you as the decision-making body, because you would be making the decision for the zoning text amendment. You normally wouldn't make it for the design review, but, um, the most onerous, um, public engagement process carries the whole bundle. It is a recommendation from the planning commission to approve this. They made that recommendation at their February 18th, 2021 meeting. Claudia, if you can go to the next slide. So per, uh, in terms of your process, if you recall, per our McMinnville Municipal Code, you have two, uh, things you can do. You can vote on the recommendation of the planning commission, and that does not require a public hearing. And we typically bring it to you as a recommendation first. And, or you could ask for a public hearing to hear additional evidence to make an informed decision. Um, we typically talk to you about what the 120 day clock deadline is for our land use applications. In this case, it's May 22nd, 2021. We did work fairly hard to get this into the process quickly, because, um, the applicant had been working with us on trying to find a solution for what they wanted to do out there for several months as we worked through what that solution would look like. So the project request in front of you is that the, um, the, is to amend the three mile lane planned development overlay, and that's ordinance number 4131. And it was amended by ordinance 4172. That ordinance limits freestanding signage on commercial parcels in Zone 2 of the three mile lane overlay district. So it only allows one. And the request is to amend that planned development overlay ordinance for Zone 2 to allow additional freestanding signs for businesses that employ drive-up service. Like, because typically your drive-through lanes need more than one freestanding sign. You usually have a pre-order sign and, um, and then an order sign, and both are freestanding. Um, and the amendment would be similar to what's in our city sign code that applies to the rest of the city. So the zone text amendment, uh, request is to amend ordinance number 4131, which was amended by 4572. And just to walk you through the ordinances, 4131 was adopted in 1981, so fairly early in our planning process. Um, and it created three areas in this three mile lane area. Um, I, I don't have my cursor, so I don't think you can use it for you, but, um, and what it did was it said, what are the allowed land uses in those three areas? Go to the next one, Claudia. And so this shows the comprehensive plan map for the three mile lane area right now. This is, this is relative to those land uses that was in that, um, the original ordinance. And the star is the, where the property is that we're talking about. So you'll notice that that's a com- commercial comprehensive plan designation. And then for the zoning map, um, same thing, the, the, it's our C3 general commercial zone, which is the same zone that you see all along Highway 99, um, as well. So their request is to, uh, the ordinance number 4572 was then adopted in 1994, so 13 years later. And what that did was it created three zones within this planned development overlay. Um, and these three zones are different than the three areas in the first one, which looked at land uses. This ordinance is looking at design and development standards for that area. Um, so it's a planted section four with a new development standards and section five with new signage standards for these three new respective zones. So this is where you find the signage criteria for the three mile lane overlay. So this shows Zone 2 based on that ordinance in fourth, in, uh, 1995, 1994, and where the, um, McDonald's is in that, in the commercial zone. So it's a very small zone. So their proposal is to amend what's called Section B of ordinance, that's number 4572, to add a number seven to it, um, with the language that's shown before. So Section B regulates signage in that Zone 2 that I just showed you for commercial and industrial properties. And the language that their proposal is, is to amend it with, is to add, um, additional free sign, standing signs are permitted with businesses that employ drive-up service. One such sign not to exceed 36 square feet in area or six feet in height is allowed per order station. In addition, one secondary sign, a maximum of 15 square feet in area and five feet in height, is allowed per order station. So two freestanding signs per order station. Any freestanding sign that has copy facing towards a public street shall be located a minimum of 30 feet from that street's property line. Wall mile, mount sign shall be exempt from this. So this is the exact same language that's in the McMinnville Municipal Code for drive-up, um, businesses. So the reason why they're proposing this is that the language in ordinance number 4572 is quite frankly dated. It's from 1994. Um, and so there's been a lot of evolution in the fast food restaurant, uh, fast food delivery and drive-through restaurants. And so, like I said, the proposed language is taken directly from our sign code that's in our McMinnville Municipal Code that serves the whole city, but not this particular area. And that, um, was added to the signage chapter in 2016. So in 2016, we added this language to accommodate second drive-throughs at these fast food restaurants, because that's how the, the business was evolving. It's not allowed in the, this doesn't apply to the three mile lane overlay, because we have these two other ordinances that are governing that, um, area. The criteria that we use to look at a zoning text amendment, um, we don't have specific criteria in our code, so, but there is a section that allows the, um, planning director to illustrate compliance with applicable review criteria um, by deeming other materials that might be necessary to explain the details of the requested land use action. So we asked that, um, the criteria we're, we were gonna review this with was that the proposed change was consistent with the relevant goals and policies of the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan and the McMinnville Municipal Code, um, that there's a public need for the kind of change that's being requested, and that the need would be best served by changing the classification of the particular piece of property in question as compared with other available property. So the proposed change in terms of compliance with the relevant goals of the policies of the comp plan and the McMinnville Municipal Code, it is consistent with the comp plan and our, um, zoning ordinance. Um, and then it's also consistent with the planned development amendment criteria that, um, is in our zoning ordinance as well. That's site-specific, but we felt we would look at it for this overlay area too. Now, in terms of a public need for the change of kind in question, there has been, um, obviously in the last year and a year or so, a public demand for contactless drive-through services for food. We, we feel in the, in the, um, trends in the economy are showing that this type of, um, access to food in terms of drive-through services will continue in terms of increased, uh, demand for that. And digital ordering and pickup has increased during the pandemic as well. Um, we also feel that the proposed text amendment allows businesses the flexibility to respond to that changing public demand. Uh, the need that best be served by changing the classification of this particular piece of property, we've, you know, so that's asking the question of, for McDonald's to be able to provide this second drive-through lane, should they relocate their business to a place otherwise in the city that has the C3 commercial zone, but doesn't have this planned development overlay on it, so that they could provide the drive-through lane? We did feel that that relocation to the existing uses, um, was practical. So the planning commission, uh, held a public hearing, and then they voted unanimously to recommend the approval of the zoning text amendment to you as City Council. Second request was the three mile lane design review. This can only be approved if the first request is approved, because we're now reviewing it under that new criteria that's been amended into the, uh, three mile lane planned development overlay. And it's to, it's to add this, uh, to allow for the signage to add the second drive-through service lane. So this is the site. It's the McDonald's there on the corner of Northeast Cumulus and Norton Lane. This is the site plan that shows the second drive-through as how it would be added to the site. Um, to be able to add the second drive-through, they will need to relocate a couple of things. Uh, they, they will be eliminating some parking. It'll be relocating, uh, the garbage enclosure, and they'll be amending their landscape plan. The two drive-through order stations will have two directional signs, and then each order station will have one pre-bout, pre-browse board and one menu board. In terms of the parking, that will be reduced to accommodate the second drive-through. They currently have 49 existing stalls on their site. Per our land use ordinance, they are required to have 14 parking stalls. With the amendments, they will have 26 stalls on site. So they'll still have considerably more than what's required. Um, and like I said, they relocate their solid waste enclosure. It still meets our code. And their landscape plan has already been reviewed and approved by the Landscape Review Committee, the amended plan. These are the two directional signs that are proposed in terms of getting people to the drive-through lanes. These are exempt in our, in our code, and they're also exempt in the planned development overlay. And then these are the two, uh, freestanding signs for the, uh, each drive-through lane, one being the digital menu board, one being the pre-browse board. Um, the pre-browse board, as presented in their application, is six feet. It exceeds the height standard of five feet, which is the recommendation for the, um, amendment to the planned development overlay. So there is a conditional approval for that land use decision that limits it to a maximum height of five feet. In terms of public testimony, um, we received an email from Dorothy McQueen when we, uh, sent it out in advance of the public hearing for Planning Commission for, to adjacent property owners. She had concerns about the increased parking lot traffic and questioned if McDonald's was improving their fence along the north property line. We went out to the site, um, and met, uh, with her and looked at the site. Northern property line of the McDonald's property has a, an existing mature hedge that creates a solid screen in front of the solid wooden fence, um, and appears to be in fair condition. So they are not, uh, improving that, but, um, it does provide the necessary screening. At the public hearing, there were three people that testified. Linda O'Hara testified. She had also had concerns, she was a neighboring property owner, about, um, how the development would fringe on adjacent property. She came into the public hearing with those concerns. She felt more comfortable after she heard the presentation and what the project, what the different, um, moving components of the project was. And, and so after that, she said that she was in support of it. Um, another person testified, Haley. We did not capture her last name. It was inaudible in our recording, so I apologize for that. But she was also supportive. And then Mark Davis testified. He was concerned that the second drive-through would generate more traffic, uh, which would then create traffic issues, uh, on Highway 18 at the Norton Lane intersection. We walked through that with the planning commission, um, in terms of traffic impact. So traffic modeling is based upon comprehensive plan destinations. That's why I showed that to you at the beginning of this presentation. So when we put together the model for the whole city, we do it based on the comprehensive plan designation. Each designation has a certain number of employees and trips associated with it. Um, and this is an allowed use in the comprehensive plan designation, which is commercial. So it's already accommodated in the transportation model. The TSPs then determine based on comprehensive plan destinations and zoning map destinations. That's why we showed you the zone map. Um, if there's an upzone, so if we're changing from one zone to another zone, and there's a higher and more intensive impact in terms of traffic, we then require a traffic impact analysis for intersection impacts around that particular development. Or if we feel it's a really large development, so we've done this with some of our planned developments that have come in front of you recently, we also require a traffic impact analysis for those. Uh, we did not feel the second drive-through lane on an existing allowed use constituted that requirement, so we did not require it. We did send this to ODOT, um, to get their comments for it. They did not provide any comments. Um, so typically, they only provide us comments if they have concerns. Just to show you some of the vehicle impacts on Highway 18, this is, uh, some information from the three mile lane area plan that was presented to City Council, geez, um, on March 14th, 2019, so almost two years ago. Um, and it looked at existing, uh, transportation, traffic operations on Highway 18. We, we, uh, ODOT has a way of, um, assigning grades to the, the different intersections. It's, it's a little counterintuitive to how we think of grades in terms of A, B, C, D, E, and F, um, because a lot of, um, intersections operate at a lower level grade and are still considered adequate. Um, but if you look at the adequate. But if you look at the Norton Lane one, it's operating at a C level, which is below the mobility target. So it still has capacity for more traffic there. And if you recall, when they came and brought this presentation to us, they were surprised at how well these intersections were operating on Highway 18. These are good, these are good grades for those for a highway facility. And then this follows up on that and just sort of describes how they said that signalized intersections on Oregon 18 at Norton Lane and Cumulus operate well within mobility targets. So the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the three mile lane design review application for this project as well. So again, in front of you, you can vote on the recommendation of the Planning Commission by voting on the ordinances this evening, or you can ask for a public hearing to hear additional evidence to make an informed decision. And we would then schedule that public hearing for the future. And we do have room within our 120 day clock to do so. Are there any questions?
Mayor, I think you're on mute.
That's why I always keep it unmuted. So so again, let's go ahead and ask questions of Heather at this time from any of the councillors.
And Mayor, I'm going to jump in here. This is a little off the cuff, but it came to our attention that in all likelihood, the second ordinance is falls under that quasi-judicial process since it's on a specific dealing with a specific property. So I would also ask during this time that if any councillors have had any ex-party contact regarding that project, that you disclose it now for the record.
Thank you, Amanda.
The eating there doesn't qualify, right?
So again, any ex-party contact on on either of these issues? Hearing none. Okay. So we'll go back and and now any questions of Heather or discussion among the council? Go ahead, Zach.
And I saw it buried in the minutes, but just to clarify and confirm, this did get reviewed and approved by the Landscape Review Committee because it has a significant change to the asphalt and landscape and new stuff proposed. But I remember it coming through and I saw it in there in the notes. I just didn't see it in your presentation.
Thank you, Zach.
And I'd just like to comment, I don't I may be the only one that in this group that actually is willing to eat there. I don't know. But my family enjoys McDonald's for what that whatever that's worth. I can tell you, this is a much needed improvement over on that area. It gets backed up all kinds of directions already. Cars are sitting there idling, and you know, that's not what we want either in terms of fuel efficiency and and carbon footprint. So I just think this is a very much needed improvement for that area of the community. And I think even the residents, once it happens, will be very happy at how that will allow traffic to flow through there much better.
Yeah, so I wasn't able to enter it into the record because we don't have this as part of the record. But we did visit with after the Planning Commission discussion relative to the concerns of traffic impact, the question came up whether a second drive-through lane increases trips. And there's no evidence to suggest that one way or another, but it definitely increases efficiencies of operation. And so it should help with queuing altogether on that site.
Well, the other piece, too, is if we can remember back when we had our three mile lane discussion, and we had a lot of of input from the residents in that area, you know, not having gas stations, not having grocery stores, and having very limited food choices, that's a big concern in that area. So the efficiency, I think, is very important. Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, the question before us now is the City Council has the opportunity to schedule a public hearing on this or on these ordinances or to ask for a first reading of the ordinance, understanding that there was a public hearing held at the Planning Commission, and we went over those four testimonies. So what would the council like to do? Would we like to have a public hearing or have a first reading?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we have a first reading.
Okay.
I don't know.
I agree.
I would, yeah, I would agree with that as well.
Okay, so if so I'm going to ask for a motion to, excuse me, I'm going, if no one objects, and we'd like to consider a first reading of both items at the same time. Does any councillor object to having ordinance 5101 and 5102 read by title only? Okay, then I would ask the city attorney to for the first reading of ordinance 5101 and 50 5101 by title only. Amanda?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5101 and ordinance amending ordinance number 4131 as amended by ordinance 4572, three mile lane planned development overlay for drive-up signage in zone two.
Thank you. And then I'll ask Amanda to do a first reading of ordinance number 5102 by ordinance title only.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5102 and ordinance approving TML 2-20, a three mile lane design review for drive-up signage at 225 Northeast Norton Lane McDonald's Restaurant.
Thank you. And so I will now ask for a motion to pass ordinance 5101 and 5102 to a second reading.
So moved. So moved.
And a second? It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Adam. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Please signify by saying nay. Okay, this ordinance passes unanimously five to zero to take us to a second meeting. So I will ask the city attorney to do a second reading of ordinance number 5101 by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5101 and ordinance amending ordinance number 4131 as amended by ordinance number 4572, three mile lane planned development overlay for drive-up signage in zone two.
Thank you, Amanda. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5101.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Remy. I will ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Garvin.
Aye.
Counselor Geary.
Approved.
Counselor Minkie.
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Aye.
And Council President Dropkin.
Aye.
Ordinance number 5101 is unanimously adopted by a vote of five to zero. I will ask the city attorney to do a second reading on ordinance number 5102 by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5102 and ordinance approving TML 2-20, a three mile lane design review for drive-up signage at 225 Northeast Norton Lane McDonald's Restaurant.
Thank you, Amanda. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5102.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Chris and seconded by Kelly. So I will ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Garvin.
Aye.
Counselor Geary.
Aye.
Counselor Minkie.
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Aye.
And Council President Dropkin.
Aye.
Ordinance number 5102 is adopted by a vote of five to zero. That concludes our council meeting this evening. And so I will adjourn the council. It is 9:18 this evening. Thank you for your attendance, and have a good evening.